If you got it.
That's from Randy.
All right. All right, call it to order, regular city council meeting Tuesday, February 20th. We'll go ahead and stand and Chief Anderson, if you do the salute, and I'll do the implication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Bow your heads if you like. Father God, thank you so much for this opportunity to be here and to serve on this horseshoe. Father God, thank you for all the people that have come to be a part of this and that moving the city business forward. Father God, we just pray over the protection of our employees, our police fired, and the guys around the truck. Father God, and just keep all of us in your will as we move forward in your name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, item number two, administer oath of office to Councilwoman Ward One Judy Myers, Councilman Ward Two John Evans, Councilwoman Ward Three Linda Steele, Councilwoman Ward Four Vicki Douglas. Judge, all right, you want them all down there at once?
Just one at a time.
One at a time, all right.
They're easy to handle that way.
All right, we will go with them.
They have a key here if they get out of control.
All right.
And I brought the... So you're Judge Barker.
Wonderful. Myers, yes.
We're not going anywhere without a glass.
See if I don't screw it up this time.
If you don't, I might. I Judy Myers.
I Judy Myers.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of Oklahoma.
Constitution of the state of Oklahoma.
And the charter.
And the charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of War Acres, Oklahoma.
Of the city of War Acres, Oklahoma.
And that I will not.
And that I will not.
knowingly receive.
Knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money.
Any money.
For other valuable things.
For other valuable things.
For the performance.
For the performance.
Or non-performance.
Or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation.
Other than the compensation.
Allowed by law.
Allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
My duties as councilwoman.
My duties as councilwoman.
I heard that from last night.
That's all right, I'm okay with it. My duties as councilwoman.
Ward One.
Ward One.
Public Works Authority trustee.
Public Works Authority trustee.
And economic development.
And economic development.
Authority trustee.
Authority trustee.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilman John Evans, you ran a hard race, so glad you're here.
I John Evans.
I John Evans.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of Oklahoma.
The Constitution of the state of Oklahoma.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of War Acres, Oklahoma.
Of the city of War Acres, Oklahoma.
And that I will not.
And that I will not.
knowingly receive.
Knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money.
Any money.
Or other valuable thing.
Or other valuable thing.
For the performance.
For the performance.
Or non-performance.
Or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation.
Other than the compensation.
Allowed by law.
Allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
My duties as councilman.
My duties as councilman.
Ward Two.
Ward Two.
Public Works Authority trustee.
Public Works Authority trustee.
And Economic Development Authority trustee.
And Economic Development Authority trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Luke.
Can you have them sign their...
And Judge Baker, all right, and Ms. Steele.
I have to sign this?
Even though it says Debbie Morris up there.
Even though it says Debbie Morris up there.
Already did it.
Hashtag done.
Thank you.
You usually don't trust me with that.
Want to introduce Stephen?
Yes.
Ready to go?
Yep.
I Linda Steele.
I Linda Steele.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of Oklahoma.
The Constitution of the state of Oklahoma.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of War Acres, Oklahoma.
Of the city of War Acres, Oklahoma.
And that I will not.
And that I will not.
knowingly receive.
Knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation.
Other than the compensation.
Allowed by law.
Allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
My duties as councilwoman, Ward Three.
My duties as councilwoman, Ward Three.
Public Works Authority trustee.
Public Works Authority trustee.
And Economic Development Authority trustee.
And Economic Development Authority trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
All right, Ms. Douglas.
Yep.
Thank you.
And really excited to have Judge Stephen Baker, he's coming on as BOA Traffic and Associate Judge, so thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Hi.
Ready to go? You want to raise your hand here? I Vicki Douglas.
I Vicki Douglas.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Oklahoma.
The Constitution of the state of Oklahoma.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of War Acres, Oklahoma.
Of the city of War Acres, Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly.
And that I will not knowingly.
Receive directly or indirectly.
Receive directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable things.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation.
Other than the compensation.
Allowed by law.
Allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
My duties as councilwoman, Ward Four.
My duties as councilwoman, Ward Four.
Public Works Authority trustee.
Public Works Authority trustee.
And Economic Development Authority trustee.
And Economic Development Authority trustee.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you. My signature's horrible.
All right, item number three, presentation of outgoing councilman, my Vice Mayor Mike Schmidt.
So can you guys quote that because you heard it four times?
There's extra points, that's what I was told. All right, so I just want to say thank you so much to Mike. He has served on this council many, many times, a couple of different times, and he stepped down to allow us to have John, that is one of our past council members, and also has a knowledge of a lot of stuff we have to deal with in these next coming years. So I really appreciate that, that you have the heart to do what's right for our city, and very thankful for all the time that you've spent with me as Vice Mayor, and just watching my back and helping take care of me. So Mike, we just want to honor you and give you the city of War Acres.
That's pretty sweet.
So it's, you know, we did plaques, but you know what, this is the city, and we are so thankful.
Nice, nice.
Appreciate you. All right, and next, we have Mr. Colin Woodell with PCO, they are the, he's the orchestra director, and I don't know if all of you know it or not, but we had Putnam City, North Original, and West perform in the London New Year's Day Parade.
Wow.
So these are some of the students that was able to come, and is there anything you want to say before we do this real quick?
Oh sure, we had a great time, we had a great experience, we took forty-one orchestra students and parents from Putnam City originally. As a district, we took over two hundred and forty, and it was a great performance, we performed in the New Year's Day Parade, as well as did a concert series, and the students performed exceptionally and made us all so proud, so yeah.
Very cool, well, let's give them a round of the hands. So I was able to get, write, and personally sign a thank you letter to each one of the students, as well as the chaperones, because it's a really big deal to me and this council that we show up, and I go internationally all the time, so I love that we have people that are so talented, that they are asked to get out there and do that, so. For those of you that are students, the chaperones did, please come up real quick, so we do a picture, and councils, if anyone wants to come out as well, do a picture with them, so they can get out of here, because we've got a long meeting to do. So.
Engineering report, I hope we don't need that, because...
Probably up here, Roger.
I think they fit up here better. There's more space.
Great job, guys.
Bloody good.
I would have been over there drinking pints of ale.
All right, hey, thank you all so much, your parents, for all that you do to support your kiddo.
This is the truth.
This is the truth.
I wondered why there were so many people here.
Uh, yes. Yeah, absolutely. Before we move on to item number four, I want to make mention that we have lost somebody in the city, Barbara Harris. We called her Stuff, and she was, I don't even know how long, but thirty-plus years, forty years, doing a lot of stuff to help us in this city, and she will be very greatly missed. She volunteered, she was on budget committee, was a pain in the butt to a lot of people, but she didn't care, she was doing what was right for the city. So she'll be laid to rest later this next week, but just wanted to honor her for a moment and just recognize her work. Thank you. I'm going to move up item thirteen real quick, so we can get Ms. Veronica out of here. You're very welcome.
She's still going to be here to serve change.
Ah, there you go, final, well, final public hearing, a discussion of possible action on the resolution requesting Oklahoma City to cut off water services to several War Acres properties for non-payment of sewer fees. That's pretty much it, any questions?
Same as before, just different people.
Yep, just different people, like, I mailed out ten this time, five paid in full, one made payment arrangements, and we're cutting off four. You have six in front of you, but two came in and paid after the agenda went out.
Okay.
And...
May I take a motion?
Yes, please.
I make a motion to, where was that, number fourteen?
Thirteen.
On the resolution requesting Oklahoma City cut off the water services for War Acres properties for non-payment of sewer fees.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Myers.
Yay.
Von Thayer.
Yay.
Douglas.
Yay.
Prince.
Yay.
Tribby.
Yay.
Steele.
Yay.
Schmidt.
No.
Thanks. Evans, I am so sorry.
That was a test, Mike.
Morris.
Yay.
Mayor.
Yay.
Mayor Supreme.
Should have abstained.
Should have abstained, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all you do. There's a lot of arguments.
Change all these.
Oh dang. All right, item number four, discussion of possible action on appointing a Vice Mayor for swearing, and swearing in. We had a couple of people that wanted to do so, and at this point in time, if, I don't know if we have the secondary one or not, but I know Ms. Steele, you had some things you wanted to read and make mention.
Yeah, should I be nominated first?
Sure, Matt.
I think we should pick, see who the other one is too.
Yeah.
How does this roll?
The motion to appoint Councilwoman Steele as Vice Mayor.
So, go ahead and do that.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't know if this was appropriate yet. I nominate Linda Steele, Councilwoman Ward Three, to be the Vice Mayor, I think she'll be a great asset.
Thank you.
Okay, second?
Technically, did you want it in the form of a motion?
Yes.
I moved.
Okay.
To nominate her.
These processes are not well-defined in the charter, and so...
Thank you for your guidance.
We do nominations, that doesn't need a second, then at some point there has to be a motion, if there's a motion to appoint, then there'd be a second, there could be a discussion debate before there's a vote on the motion, but then there'd be a vote on that motion, so. I was just catching up when you asked for a second, just to make sure, is it a motion?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so, correct, waiting for a motion, for a second.
I moved, someone can second it?
Waiting for a second.
So we need a second, can, I can't second it, right?
You can, sure.
I'll second it.
Okay.
I did have my speech for the rest of my council members as well, if we could just pass it this way to the other four. I was able to get it that direction. I do take this nomination very serious, even though my time on council has only been five months, and so I did prepare a speech, and so, here it goes, thank you, Ms. Debbie, for the nomination again. To this council, our municipal officials, all departments, and ten thousand four hundred and forty-three citizens of War Acres, I would like to take a minute to introduce myself to you and give you my reasons as to why I would be a good choice as your next Vice Mayor of War Acres. First off, and most important, I would like to acknowledge my children here and in the audience, for them to be here for this moment and to appreciate our lifestyle as, you know, their mom navigates municipal governance. I've taken the time to go to the different classes, be a part of the Oklahoma Municipal League, the Congress of Mayors, and the newly elected official trainings, and so I really just appreciate my children's support and my family's support in this journey of ours. So, I'd like to acknowledge that while I am one of the newest council members, one thing I've learned for sure is that there will always be much to learn in municipal governing, regardless of how long you've been a council member. Thus far, I've allowed no grass to grow under my feet, I've taken it upon myself to not only familiarize ourselves with the community needs, the various departments of War Acres, and what our constraints are. I've also gone above and beyond to begin to cultivate relationships with our surrounding municipalities, state agencies, and local organizations that all play a vital role in supporting War Acres municipal authority and development. While I am a new face on this council, I am not new what it takes, to what it takes to be an effective Vice Mayor. Before I carried this title of Councilwoman, I have carried many others. I have been a soldier, an artillery gunner, a blue collar employee, a tradesman, a business owner, a nonprofit founder, a public speaker, a state candidate, and above all, I've been a mother during all of these roles in my life, I'm a go-getter naturally. In order to balance my professional and my home life, I've learned to acknowledge and prioritize my first responsibility, always being to my children and my co-parenters. My background has shaped me to be an effective communicator, an out-of-the-box thinker, and someone you can rely on to diligently and relentlessly be inquisitive, qualities that I feel are very becoming of a Vice Mayor. Secondly, I would like to state how different a Vice Mayor and a Mayor's position are. I believe right now, War Acres has a Mayor with a vision, a vision to see War Acres have more revenue in our reserve to resolve our infrastructural issues and to drive business to War Acres, while continuing to set the standards for safe streets and neighborhoods. As Vice Mayor, I believe it is my responsibility to support the growth of War Acres, but also be objective, on the other hand, to bring fresh eyes, perspective, and to be solutionary-minded, and not just follow blindly. I can assure you, as your next Vice Mayor, no question will go unasked, no opportunity will be overlooked. I will always be present for the needs of War Acres, if and when our Mayor is unavailable or I am needed. Some things that I've already done in my five short months of being here to show you that I have a dedication to our town and to this council, as I've served on the Metropolitan Library Board in conjunction with this role for five months. I've attended the NOI for the Oklahoma Municipal League Institute of New Elected Officials. I've attended the Congress of Mayors, and I served on the Public Safety Subcommittee. I've attended the Northwest Chamber of Commerce Night of Accolades to build new business relationships for War Acres. I have filled in and been present during the Miss Panama for Oklahoma when Mayor Godwin was out of town. I have regularly scheduled weekly meetings with our wonderful city clerk, Ms. Pam, I bring her coffee so she can tolerate me and all my questions. I've met frequently as needed with our police chief Patty before his retirement, and now ongoing with Chief Anderson. I enjoy our regular talks and to learn the needs of our police department. I have met with our Public Works Director, Animal Control Department Fire Chief as needed, to discuss how to better support the various departments encompassing War Acres. I've hosted a community town hall meeting for local boxing nonprofit and our War Acres citizens, and is seeking to pass legislation this upcoming session. I engage with legislature, with the legislature for issues affecting War Acres, as well as interim studies that highlight the positive work being done in our city, specifically within our veteran community, since I am a veteran. I've cultivated working partnerships in a network with both rural and neighboring municipalities and mayors, working towards incorporating the Mobilizing Mayor's Initiative being set forth by the Oklahoma Veterans Suicide and Prevention Task Force in 2024. I am not running for Vice Mayor because I have all the answers. I am running for Vice Mayor because I can offer you the diligence, the time, and the attention and passion it takes to be an effective Vice Mayor, and I appreciate your consideration for this opportunity to serve as your next Vice Mayor of War Acres. Thank you.
Morris.
Yay.
Steele.
Yay.
Prince.
Yay.
Douglas.
Can we find out who the other person is first? Is there still...
Is there other nominations?
Was there another nomination?
Is that how it works procedurally?
In the past, we've had the two names, and they've just called out whichever name they wanted.
At this point, there's no other nomination on the floor, there is a motion that's being voted on, though. But as far as I know, there's no other nomination.
So we're going to vote on this one?
We're correct, we're, not gonna, are.
Well, that's what she's trying to find out, she's...
He had said that somebody else was wanted to, at first.
Yeah.
But they changed their mind?
Because they withdrew.
Oh, okay. I know I'm going to get in trouble this, but I'm going to abstain.
Von Thayer.
Abstain.
Myers.
Nay.
Tribby.
Abstain.
Evans.
No.
Mayor.
And I will abstain from both, or three, or however many.
Motion fails.
All right, we have another nomination.
I nominate Scott Tribby to be Vice Mayor of War Acres.
Looking for a second?
Second.
All right.
Same question, was that motion, was that?
Motion to.
I'm sorry, motion.
Motion to. A point, all right.
And who seconded?
I did.
Okay. I thought it was you.
It's Evans, not Schmidt.
Yes. I've gone in and changed, marked out Schmidt.
You are your own person.
Yay. Evans.
Yes.
Douglas.
Yes.
Prince.
If Laura said yay to her, do I have, can I say yay again, or, I'm not sure what...
Yes, you can, it's a separate vote.
It failed, so we have to vote on something.
Yay.
Steele.
Abstain.
Morris.
Yay.
Tribby.
Nay.
I think Schmidt did that, too.
Mayor.
Abstain.
Motion approved.
All right.
No.
We will have the...
Ms. Pam.
Oh, Von Thayer, oh, forgot Von Thayer.
Oh, sorry, Jim.
She was at Daytona, so she's just...
Seriously?
We're at Daytona? I just watched it.
It's a yes vote.
That was yesterday, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yes. Now motion approved.
All right, congratulations, Tribby. All right, Baker, all right.
Barker.
Barker, I am sorry. Steele, thank you.
I Scott Tribby.
I Scott Tribby.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Oklahoma.
The Constitution of the state of Oklahoma.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of War Acres, Oklahoma.
Of the city of War Acres, Oklahoma.
And that I will not.
And that I will not.
knowingly receive.
knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance.
For the performance.
Or non-performance.
Or non-performance.
Of any act.
Of any act.
Or duty pertaining.
Or duty pertaining.
To my office.
To my office.
Other than the compensation.
Other than the compensation.
Allowed by law.
Allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Discharge my duties as Vice Mayor.
Discharge my duties as Vice Mayor.
Vice Chairman of the Public Works Authority Trust.
Vice Chairman of the Public Works Authority Trust.
And Vice Chairman of the Economic Development Authority Trust.
And Vice Chairman of the Economic Development Authority Trust.
To the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir.
Need a John Hancock?
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge, appreciate it. All right, move on to item number five, recess to enter into the War Acres Public Works Authority Meeting.
Oh boy, we're jumping the gun, here we go.
It's the long one. So, the consent docket, individual items may be deleted from the consent docket for discussion under action. Item number two, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent docket, items A through C.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Myers.
Yay.
Steele. Steele?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Prince? Tribby?
Yay.
Montaire?
Nay.
Douglas?
Yay.
Evans?
Abstain.
Mayor?
Yay.
Motion approved.
All right. Item number three, presentation by engineers of Bethany War Acres Public Works Authority to report the report you received and met with Mark Long about. We also have Sean from Cowan Engineering.
Thank you, mayor and council. This actually is a presentation by Cowan Engineering Group. This is the Bluff Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant Engineering Report, which is an evaluation and discussion of the alternatives of how to address the consent order that we are currently under with the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality. I'll turn it over to Sean.
Thank you, Mark. Again, Sean Bevren with Cowan Group Engineering with the trust engineer for the Bethany War Acres Public Works Authority. So just a little bit of an overview of the presentation tonight. We'll go a little bit over our scope of services for this evaluation, a little bit about the existing facility and the project need. And then we looked at three different alternatives that we'll go over tonight. And then the opinion of probable cost of those alternatives. And then we'll discuss a little bit about the current status of the plant and the current loan that we are working under. And then we'll provide a recommendation and a plan of action with this evaluation. So our scope of services was to go in and do a condition assessment of all the structures and equipment within the plant, how it was operational. Also look at the hydraulics within the plant, how it was operating, whether it was operating efficiently, and also look at capacity as far as any future growth. And then like I mentioned, we looked at three different alternatives that we'll discuss in more detail and then pull that all together into an engineering report to provide a recommendation. So the Bethany War Acres Bluff Creek Plant was originally constructed in 1979 and then a new facility was constructed in 1993. And that's the current plant that's being operated today. And in that new plant, the treatment process was changed to an SVR type system. And so new headworks, pumping facility was added, filters, chlorination, dechlorination, sludge processing. And then there was holding basins that were constructed as well for those peak flows during those rainy seasons. And then in 2004, there was an additional project to add additional sludge storage in 2004. What you have before you, this is just an overview of the plant site. This was included in the engineering reports. It's probably difficult to see on the screen, but all the highlighted structures there, all the different structures that we evaluated in our condition assessment. And so north is up in that slide and south to the bottom. So basically, all that wastewater flow comes in from the south and flows north through the system and then back into Bluff Creek. To discuss a little bit about the current violations that are ongoing at the plant, we've got some NOVs, consent orders from the past that are being incorporated into this current consent order. Also compliance evaluation as far as the operation of the plant and condition of the plant. And so all of that was basically compiled into an order to comply consent order. And so the Public Works Authority is required to complete those tasks, and one of those being this engineering report, which is a condition assessment and evaluation to fix these compliance issues. So one of the things we looked at is the existing capacity of the plant. And so we worked with both cities and their engineers to determine as a part of this evaluation if we're gonna rehab the plant, if there needs to be any sort of expansion. And so working through that analysis, we're foreseeing, you know, minimal growth. So the permitted capacity of that plant today will meet future demand. So as a part of a rehab project, no expansion is gonna be required. And so we basically evaluated each treatment process within the plant. So starting off as far as the primary treatment system, we looked at the headworks, which is where all that wastewater flow comes into the treatment plant. And then we've got the flow equalization basins, which is just offset of the headworks. So we looked at just the operational and the equipment, what was operational at the time. We also looked at secondary treatment systems, which is the SVR, so the main treatment portion of the plant, and then the filters. Also looked at the disinfection system and then the solids handling, you know, what the processes and the current operation of those facilities. And a lot of the details of each of those existing structures is in that report in more detail. So we looked at three alternatives. Alternative one was rehabilitating that existing wastewater treatment plant with its existing treatment process, so keeping the SVR treatment process. Alternative two was also rehabilitation of the existing wastewater treatment plant, but going to a new treatment process, so converting that to an extended air. So there are some new facilities required to be constructed in that alternate. And then the last alternate we looked at was decommissioning that existing wastewater treatment plant. And it being Oklahoma City and the Water Utilities Trust operates a plant near Creek, about a mile to the northeast. And so working out an agreement to take that flow to their treatment facility. So as we went through each alternate, looked at a few design criteria as far as site constraints, future treatment needs, as far as whether there's gonna be any changes in permit requirements that needed, you know, additional treatment. And then also the compatibility with the existing plant and its equipment. And then looked at the capital costs and the long-term operation and maintenance of each alternate. So alternate one, like I mentioned, was utilizing the same treatment process, but looking at opportunities of more efficient treatment within that facility and then also replacing inoperable equipment and upgrading structures. So some of the major improvements through our condition assessment in order to rehabilitate this plant to be in compliance with DEQ are upgrades to the headworks, new bar screens, and grit removal at the beginning of the plant. Holding pond improvements, which are the equalization basins, and being able to pull that flow back in through the plant. One of the new additional treatment improvements we're making is a fine bubble aeration system, which is in the SVRs. And so that's gonna improve the treatment efficiencies of that SVR system. Also looking at upgrading pumps and valves throughout the plant and then upgrading the filters. A few of these things are, we're approving right now just to get the plant within compliance. Get a couple of other upgrades, looking at the power distribution system and instrumentation and control across the plant, being able to automate the operation of the plant for it to be more efficient. And so a lot of that is just inoperational at this point. In alternate one, we are looking at a phase one, phase two option. So these next few items are looking at a phase two improvement. So we're able to get phase one within compliance. But phase two is some additional new facilities with chlorination and dechlorination facilities moving to a liquid chlorination system. So for alternate one, broken up into two phases, that alternate one, phase one cost is 29.8 million. We did make a change revision to the report for phase one. And I'm gonna pass out an updated cost estimate, if that's all right.
They have. I gave them all that tonight.
Yeah, we got it. If it's page 44.
Yes.
Thank you.
We are on top of things.
Thank you.
Pam's the bomb.
We try.
And so the reason for that revision is we moved the sludge drying beds up into phase one. And so as a part of a OWRB loan, that increases the useful life of those improvements to 29 years. So that allows that loan to expend over a 29-year period. And the phase two cost being around 12.6 million for a total cost of 42.5. Alternate two is similar besides the change in the treatment process. So a lot of the improvements that are proposed in alternate one would be improved as a part of alternate two. And so we'd be converting that to extended aeration type system. So some of those major changes in alternate two would be adding two new, or three new clarifiers to the east of the SVRs. And those SVRs being converted, one of the basins being converted to an aerobic digester system. So again, a lot of the same upgrades as alternate one would be required in alternate two. So alternate two, the estimated cost is about 53.9 million, 54 million for those improvements. Alternate three is the decommissioning of the wastewater treatment plant, which would involve kind of a multi-phase type project to transition and convert to Oklahoma City. And so that would require an agreement with Oklahoma City and its Water Utilities Trust, the construction of an interceptor to the Deer Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. And then the authority would still be responsible for that interceptor that they operate today. And so to go over a little bit as far as the phasing, so currently Oklahoma City is working on a study within that Deer Creek Basin as far as an expansion of the plant, an additional 5 million gallons. And that's just to expand the plant for the city limits. And so the authority would need to work out, you know, an agreement and a cost of service study to evaluate the Bethany War Acres adding an additional 5 million to that plant. It would also require.
We would also have to still rebuild the plant we have right now.
Yes. So phase one would require, yeah. The expansion of the Deer Creek Plant wouldn't be completed until around fiscal year 30. So that's still six years of operation that would require authority. So we have a rehabilitation cost of the existing plant before we can even, you know, make improvements to send it down to Deer Creek. And so you'll see in the cost, that phase one is to rehabilitate the plant to get us to fiscal year 30, so about 14 and a half million. And then the phase two's cost, a lot of that 200 million is the authority's responsibility for the expansion of the Deer Creek Plant, which is around 133 million just for that expansion. So just a quick comparison, you know, alternate one is around 42 and a half million with alternate three being five times the capital cost. So just to give an update on the current status of the wastewater treatment plant, we've got three, we are scheduled to have three working SVRs by the end of February. And then the filters being up in operation by mid to late April. And with those filters being in operation, we expect to be within compliance of our discharge limits. And then as you all are aware, the authority has a $5 million loan that we're working under for some of these improvements. So just an update as far as the expenditures of that loan. We've spent roughly 1.2 million to date under that loan, which is reimbursable. And then we're looking at estimated 1.8 million of additional improvements, mainly being to the filters, the equalization basin, and finishing up the SVRs. And so our total is around 3 to 3.77 million. And so we're expecting 95 to 100% of that to be able to be incorporated into that overall rehab project. So what this shows is, you know, we're looking at, you know, if we only expand 3.77 million, we've got an additional 1.3 million that can be added to contingency within the overall project budget. So Cowan Group's recommendation for the authority and the beneficiary cities would be to move forward with alternate one, which would provide the needed improvements to meet DEQ standards. Those improvements would, the useful life is estimated 29 years. And the project budget would be 30 million. And like I mentioned, alternate one is a two-phase project, but we would design both phases as one project and bid phase two as that alternate. So if the project did come in budget or under budget, we would have the ability to add those improvements within the project. So just as far as the schedule, tonight we're here for the approval of the engineering report and recommendation. Later, we'll be discussing the approval of the loan. But we would submit this engineering report to DEQ in the next week in order to comply with our consent order. We'd be expecting to move forward with the design of these improvements. And those would be submitted a year from now with obtaining a DEQ permit in June of '25. And we expect this project to take, as far as construction, about a year, year and a half to two years. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
I have a question. Does the DEQ or the federal government have a preference for the type of plant? Or they have any plans to enact any preferences that you know of?
No, they don't have any specific preference. SVR system within the state of Oklahoma and across the United States is a proven treatment method.
Good.
I have a question. I wasn't sure what the deal is with the changing the chlorine. Is that the phase part two or whatever of the alternate one?
Yes.
What made that a decision? I mean, is that a new way of treating it or whatever?
So currently, it's a chlorine gas. And so phase two, or that phase two improvement is going to liquid, which is a more safer form of chlorine.
We have to change kind of all of it as a package deal?
Yeah. We just recently, you know, made some improvements to that system, you know, just to be able to operate the plant today. So it would be able to extend, you know, additional years until we have the funding to switch that over.
Thank you.
Of the 1.2 million, that's already been spent on things like new generators. And will those be implemented into the needs of phase one to help absorb any of that cost in phase one?
Yes, we reviewed that list pretty closely. And we expect 95 to 100% of that to be able to be incorporated. So yeah, there's new blowers that were put in, pumps and valves. Those will be able to stay, and the cost of that will come off, come off the bottom, basically.
And then with the excess, if there is the excess left over from that loan, will we be able to roll it into that phase one project?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
And so we'll have all those phase two as alternates so we can work with authority on prioritizing, yes, we want to add that to the construction.
So we would get updated numbers then for what phase one cost would be after we're done with the loan or the current construction?
Once we go out to bid, when we get contractor bids in, we would know, okay, this is the phase one cost, these are the add alternates. And the authority and the cities would be able to make a decision on whether they want to add those to the contract.
Thank you.
You said the useful life would be 29 years on this alternative? Is that?
So for the improvements that we're proposing, the average life of those together is 29 years.
And what would it be for the other two alternatives? Did you project a useful life?
So I may look at Michael too. So I would. So I would expect alternate two to be around the same.
A little bit more because it had a little bit more mid-concrete in it, so the concrete would drives that longevity, materials like pumps and things that can change that every fifteen to twenty years.
All right.
You get a ranking on those two.
Mike, could could you go up to the mic if you have anything? It's just we got, you know, record, so we-
Yeah, no problem. Michael Taylor.
Thank you.
Just recap what I was saying. When you build new concrete structures, you get more longevity out of them because concrete lasts a long time, and they allow up to forty years on those for the life cycle of the project. Materials like pumps that need to be replaced or or maintained over years, you get up to twenty years, and we we weigh those with the cost of them for the overall project, and it calculates the the lifetime of the project based on their cost as well. So when we did this phase one, we got twenty-nine years. Phase, or not phase two, alternate two would have probably been thirty to thirty-five years. And then we would have gotten for alternate three, having to do a new lift station and and some upgrades to the FEVs, probably twenty-five to thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Evans?
Excuse me, I'm new to this, so I'm trying to catch up. Do I understand that how-
Evans, pull your mic down.
That you're serving as the independent third-party advisor for the council, for the trust, is that the role that you're forming?
We're the contract trust engineer, so specifically we're contracted to do this evaluation. There's been projects that have come up over the years, rehab to the to the interceptor, and then any additional issues that arise with authority, we 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 work with authority.
Okay. Have you or are you, when you present this plan, if approved to the DEQ, are you certifying it, are you signing it as the trust engineer?
Yes.
Okay. What about the payments that are being doled out? We've got a five million dollar loan, I guess, that's existing. Are you tracking the expenditures on it, or is that someone else's responsibility?
So what we've discussed and and the authority may have, you know, something more formal that they'd like, but we are going to work with Wright Water. If if they have an expenditure they would like for us to, every expenditure would come through us to review, track, make sure they're selecting the equipment that can be incorporated into the overall project. Because what we don't want is a pump or some sort of improvement that gets selected that doesn't line up with the overall project. And so we would approve that and then take it to the authority that, yes, we approve of of this improvement and it aligns with with this plan.
So in essence, you'd be countersigning their pay claim to give us the confidence that it's been double-checked?
Right.
And who was in charge of the review of the processes for the last twenty years as we came into this situation?
So the previously, the the authority had a general manager, I think is was his title, and so and then staff that operated the plant and oversaw the operation of the of the interceptor. And so a lot of the communication went between the the board and the general manager, and then we were directed by the general manager of of tasks that that needed to be completed. So mainly, most of our communication was was through the general manager.
Was was Callan made aware of anything going on prior to that, I mean, other than just taking his word?
Well, so, you know, we were actively working on the interceptor. There was a consent order for unpermitted discharges on the interceptor, which basically due to I and I infiltration and inflow from both cities during rain events, there'd be a lot of extra flow of water going through the interceptor. And so we had some discharges out of those manholes, and so we were working with DEQ and authority to slip-line that interceptor. And so a lot of our projects were were through that. As far as the plant, you know, we, you know, in authority meetings, we were following along with improvements or replacements, motor rebuilds. So the general manager gave updates to authority as far as those improvements, and based upon our our review that, you know, they sounded like they were operating the plant just fine. So we didn't find out that the plant was in disarray until the headworks failed and we were discharging it in the creek.
When he gave you the review on that, did you ever send anybody out? Does Callan send anybody out to send, let's double-check that what he's talking about, or is this just a paper shuffle?
We we hadn't really spent a lot of time going out to the plant.
Will the plant remain completely functional while we're going through this rehabilitation process, or are we going to have to make any alternate arrangements like we did temporarily before that?
Yeah, no, good question. So, yes, the plant would be fully functional during construction, so as as a far, as part of our plans, there'll be certain requirements of the contractor, has to keep certain structures in operation throughout construction, so we can op, keep it operational.
Because going to Oklahoma City is way too expensive.
So it's currently operational or not?
No, it's bypassed.
It's it's operational there. We are discharging to Bluff Creek, but there are certain limits that we're exceeding in that discharge. So the main, the main improvement we need to complete is is the filters, and once we get the filter media put into the filters, we'll be meeting those discharge.
And then also some of the things that we're working on at the trust level, but I'll just make mention of it here, that we are going to put together SOPs, we're going to put together policies and procedures for the trust, and then, so there's a level, multiple layers of accountability. So this can never, yeah, so this cannot happen again because it was just too much-
Some checks and balances will be in place?
Absolutely, yes.
And who has the ultimate oversight?
The trust does, but the trust answers to both of the cities, correct?
Okay.
So it's both Bethany and War Acres that the trust is accountable to.
So to those of you in the audience, when you see these numbers, know that we're just one-third of that number.
Yeah, that's a good clarification.
Yeah, so it's not as ominous as it, I mean, it's ominous, but it's not as ominous because we're only responsible for one-third, Bethany has two-thirds.
Yeah, and we're still, overall, I think we figured out we're about twelve and a half million dollars short total between the two cities-
Yeah.
-for the overall getting through phase two and just everything fully complete. So, but we're we're working on grants, we're working on relationships, working on other avenues at the Fed to to work through those.
So to summarize, there weren't any checks and balances in place, but going forward, we're going to have them-
Absolutely.
-so that we can not allow this to happen again?
And your recommendation right now is to proceed, recommend alternate one, phase one, for the approximate twenty-nine million, thirty million we have available funding?
Yes, yes, our our recommendation would be to move forward with alternate one with designing both phases that gives us the ability, if if the project comes under budget, it's very easy for us to add those into the contract.
And you said that the five million that's currently being spent will be applied towards that, all this equipment will be applied toward that twenty-nine million?
Correct.
So it's not like it's thirty-five million?
No.
It's still thirty?
Correct.
Okay.
You said one and a half to two years for construction and will be, is the timeframe you're looking at?
Yes.
Is that for just phase one?
So phase, if we had some phase two items, it it would extend probably more closer to the two-year timeframe.
So I'm sorry, repeat that? So that would be an additional three?
No. With the range, year and a half to two years, if we had, you know, more of the phase two items added, we'd be closer to the two-year timeframe.
Good question. As you're working through phase one, and something comes up that's in phase two while you're there, can that be incorporated, or would something you bring to the table and say, we need X amount of dollars every year, it's going to need to replace anyways rather than tear it apart and put it back together, but it doesn't do it now?
Right, so so we'll have a one-year design, it's going to take us roughly a year to to design this, and so we'll be working with operator of Wright Water to make sure nothing is coming up that has changed from our initial assessment, and then we'll be keeping the authority updated on at least a monthly basis as far as our design and then the operation of the plant to make sure nothing needs to change and and need to be addressed.
And again, checks and balances.
Right.
Let me make sure I'm clear on this. So we were fined three hundred thousand dollars, that's Bethany and War Acres, so we, ours was a hundred thousand, for, is it from DEQ for non-compliance because the license expired in twenty nineteen and we didn't correct everything?
Yeah, so that that consent order had a lot of compliance issues, and so, yeah, that that fine was a part of those multiple-
So if we don't do what we're asking for here, then can they fine us again, more money?
Yes, and there's a per day fine in there, but-
Absolutely.
-that we would be fined, and then if we just basically state we're not going to do anything, there's going to be higher fines that-
Right, okay.
Because they'll come back and revise the consent order with-
Yes, they will.
-after your fines.
They like to fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, DEQ would follow around military hummers and look for an oil pan or fine them anyways. Yeah. Any other?
So do you-
No, no, guys, I was just going to ask any other questions.
So how do you feel presenting this to them to, that you feel that they'll like our proposal, or like your proposal?
Yeah, so so we've been in some communication with DEQ, and, you know, what we're proposing as far as rehabilitation, you know, we're keeping the existing treatment process, so there's not anything changing. You know, the the treatment process didn't fail, it's, it was more of the equipment and structures that failed. So by showing that these are the inoperable structures and this is what we're going to prove to, and that this is going to put us in compliance, that's going to satisfy DEQ.
Thank you.
I have another question. How many treatment plants have you helped rehabilitate?
Michael, can probably help a little bit, how many?
We've done numerous plants across the state. One of my favorite ones was the Mustang plant that we increased from two to three and a half million gallons a day, and it was also the first category two reuse in the state. We've done wastewater plants, and we worked on the Perkins Oklahoma Water Plant, we did King Fishers, I don't want to gloat, but we've we've done a lot.
And they were on a tight budget as well?
They're all on a tight, like, basis. And we've done SBRs, we've done extended air, and a couple of other, we've even done, Sean worked on lagoons too, and tunnel, and they just built a mechanical plant as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Does that-
Yeah, where are we going to get the money?
Lobby.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
All right, item number four, consideration, discussion, possible action on resolution number-
No number yet.
No number yet.
Don't come on there because if they don't pass, I'm wanting to use a number.
A resolution of the War Acres Public Works Authority approval in municipal agreement with Bethany War Acres Public Works Authority, the authority, which agreement will serve as part of the security for the loan to the authority for, from Oklahoma Water Resource Board for the purpose of financing certain wastewater system improvements and containing other previous related thereto. And we got John and-
Yes, I'm John Wolfe with Municipal Finance Services. We're your financial advisor, and I have Jared Davison with Public Finance Law Group, who is bond counsel. And so we're both up here to address any questions you have on this agenda item, give a little bit of background because it'll jump into talking about the financing of this project that when we looked at increasing rates last year, we had only assumptions of what this cost might be, your share, the one-third share of the renovation of the plant, and then we also had other projects, which we closed a loan last year, Clean Water SRF loan with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, and the security on that piece of debt was your sanitary sewer charges plus sales tax. And we, when we look at financing a project, and where it could be with Oklahoma Water Resources Board, or you could be doing a bank loan, that we have to typically bring to the table proof that revenues are available to cover more than just the actual loan payment. When you go to to a bank to borrow funds, they want to ensure that your ability to pay back, that there is a cushion. So if something goes wrong, that you have enough revenues that can make that debt payment. And so what we did with War Acres and back in, I believe, December of last year, was to pledge this sanitary sewer revenues, but also pledges sales tax that would help meet coverage requirements. And the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, like many financial institution, require a coverage ratio, and on the loan program that you are applying for requires a one hundred and forty percent or a one point four times coverage. The revenues coming into the pot must be at least one point four times the annual debt payments that you're going to be paying over the next twenty-nine years or fifty-eight payments, semi-annual payments. And so the pledge at that time was to not just use sanitary sewer revenues, but to also pledge sales tax. We could have raised sewer rates another forty percent to have that cushion, but we felt comfortable that if at any point in time your utility revenues, your sewer revenues are insufficient to cover the annual debt payments, you'll address the sewer rates, you will not actually tap that sales tax. But this gives you the ability to pledge a sales tax, it's a flow of revenues acceptable by the Oklahoma Water Resources Board as an additional revenue source. But, and this is where Mr. Davison's going to step in, that we have a pledge of utility revenues, we've got, the public trust is actually, to a certain degree, billing the War Acres Public Works Authority for so much to actually meet the requirements of operating the plant, which includes this this debt service. And so they basically bill the representative cities, both cities, War Acres and, but that, with just that pot of money, there's also a pledge of sales tax that isn't levied by Bethany War Acres, it's levied by the city of Bethany, I mean, Beth, or by War Acres, Bethany's doing the same thing later. So with War Acres, they also pledge a sales tax, so their needs potentially, we had a discussion as to looking at prior loans that OWB has transpired, where there's a sales tax with a joint venture situation, because you're not all the same governing body like you are with your Public Works Authority. So we are looking to to engage a contract with the city or with the authority to move forward and agree to to provide, I guess, I'll let Jared express the the actual commitment by the authority, but you're guaranteeing because you don't have the exact same representation. You have just two of your members this year on on the board, so this this addresses the commitment that the board would would expect for you in this loan transaction. I may butcher that, Jared, but I'll let you address.
In the, in in hopefully much easier to understand jargon there is, the Water Resources Board is going to require us to be able to show the ability to repay this thirty million dollar loan, full stop. What has not traditionally been in place with the Bethany War Acres, PWA, is- is any type of agreement setting out how those costs are specifically allocated. The, the trust for years is just how to build you on your proportional share. All this agreement does is memorialize what that proportional share is. Um, so John can provide that information to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, can provide the individual coverage calculations. We don't specifically mention sales tax within the agreement, we just say the authority agrees to collect one forty times coverage from whatever available sources there are. Um, and so that kinda gives us the ability, it's the same structure. The Water Resources Board changed their FAP program in two thousand and sixteen, so, and we think this is the first joint beneficiary, uh, loan to go back before the Water Resources Board through the FAP program. And so what we've done is we've modeled this off of the master conservancy districts. And so scattered throughout the state, there are several master conservancy districts where the Army Corps built large reservoirs, uh, for municipal water supply. Um, those were all allocated out on a per-contract basis, and so we followed that exact model here, that any improvements that would have to be made are paid in proportional share to the use of the facility. If at any time somebody else wanted to come into the venture, uh, and the plant had the capacity to treat them, we could add them in and adjust your proportional shares accordingly. Uh, but this kinda gives us the best foot forward, uh, with the Water Resources Board, for John to be able to prove up the revenues, as well as a model that they're familiar with and comfortable with.
Okay. Good stuff.
Do y'all have any questions?
So you guys will be handling all the money talks with the?
Yes.
Water Resources Board and?
Yes.
Right, we're gonna prepare the application, we're going to explain how everything's gonna work, they're gonna wanna look at the flow of revenue, uh, and so we'll take care of this from, uh, day one, and, um, what's key is the timeline that you had in front of you tonight shows, uh, I think it was mentioned by Cowan that you have about twelve months to do the engineering before you go out to bed. And I think on the timeline, it showed March of next year. Well, we're in February about to go into March, and so the timeline was critical for us to submit an application to Oklahoma Water Resources Board as soon as possible, so that we can get on a future board meeting for consideration of this loan application, and we're planning on, uh, getting that to the May twenty-first board meeting. Uh, they typically require approximately two months, uh, to review an application, so, uh, if approved tonight, we have a ba, basically two weeks to prepare the application, get it submitted, make sure it's on the May twenty-first. If it is approved at that board meeting, uh, then there will be a, a bond sale, and you'll be one of many other applicants that will be part of a bond sale that will close somewhere around June the tenth. And so, that means that June the tenth, you have dollars in your coffers, so that you can move forward with, with encumbering the money for engineering and for other costs that are associated with this particular project. So that doesn't give us a lot of time, but, um, in order to meet the timeline that you had in front of you tonight, which is tied in with the consent order schedule, that you had stated that was provided by the Bethany Waracar's, uh, Public Works Authority to ODEQ, um, this, um, means we have to work feverishly to get all this done in time, and that's why you're seen at this, at this juncture, at this time.
Thank you for your hard work.
I got a question. What are you projecting for the interest rate for this bond issue going out?
Right now, we've, we've had, um, we had a sell earlier in January that, uh, for a thirty-year term, the average interest rate was about four point, this is, this is average rate, when I say average, it's, they're sold in serial issuances, but when you look at it from an average rate, uh, we were looking at about a four point three percent rate for thirty years. Uh, with, the market's kinda gone up and down since that point in time over the last month, this week's not good. Uh, we, but, um, we have assumed around a four, four, four point four percent interest rate when we're talking about thirty million dollars, every, every quarter of a percent of interest rate costs that much more. And that's the other reason is, uh, you don't have bids in yet on this plant, you won't have bids in until beyond a year from now. Uh, what we're trying to do is take out one of those unknowns, which is interest rates. So we're gonna monitor this, and as we submit, uh, the application, and we, we track the next couple of months, um, we'll keep you apprised of where interest rates are and how they may be up or down from, I would say, if you were to price the bonds today, you would probably be around a four point four percent. And, um, hopefully we stay in that area, hopefully we drop. There's been many, many, uh, financial experts that have said, we're, we're gonna look at drops in the federal fund rate, uh, by the FOMC, we're gonna see interest rates drop, we're gonna see inflation go away. We haven't quite seen that yet, and that's why we've been somewhat stagnant for the first two months of this year. But, um, there's indicators that rates may come down, our concern is, we can't wait around for those to come down, uh, hoping that they will, there's too many, too many, uh, unknowns as far as costs with this project, so.
And your projections, they'd be sold in June?
We would, they would actually be sold towards the end of May, if not the fir, uh, probably the last week of May. That's around Memorial Day, we'll kinda look at the schedule, but the board's underwriter will sell. If we go on the twenty-first, we'll, we'll kinda see, it could be maybe that first or second day in June, and we close a week or ten days later.
We get everything approved and that tonight, give it to y'all, we should be in good graces to get everything moving.
Right, and, and we've, just like Cowan has been talking somewhat to ODEQ, we have been talking to OWRB and basically putting them on notice that this is coming in and what's being considered, and because you are a joint, because this is a joint venture, uh, application, they don't get a lot of those. We started, uh, talking about this six months ago, so.
Will the, uh, strategy for the intent to repay be wrote out in this application? And if so, is that something that's already been discussed, as how we're gonna pay this back?
Yes, on, on, we've, in regards to, I'll make sure I understand, the first part, I didn't hear it. How are we gonna pay back the loan?
Is the strategy for the payback a part of the application, and if so, has that already been discussed?
With the Oklahoma Water Resources Board with you.
Those are rate increases.
Well, let's, let's talk, we had rate, rate increases last year.
Couple months ago.
And?
But that was to catch us up to what it should be, just being regular.
That rate increase included catching up, the loan that you took out, well, the Public Works Authority, I think, took out technically.
For the ten.
And the anticipated loan for the joint trust, which honestly was based on project costs that would need to be higher, but as my, as I understand it, the joint trust can't leverage to get to the full forty-whatever million, and so you wouldn't have to do anything to ensure that Waracar's could pay it sure. I can't speak to Bethany, I don't know what they've done with rates, or if they're gonna have to increase to cover this.
I'm, I'm gonna break this real simple, uh, down real simply. We, the rate increase that we did for Waracar's was intended to generate, we had to look at prior volumetric usage, because your sewer's based on water consumption, and we determined that the rate increases should generate approximately twenty-one million dollars and, uh, enough revenues to cover twenty-one million dollars in indebtedness at the rates that I just mentioned to you. Uh, but we did borrow from the Clean Water SRF program, the ten point two million last year. Uh, that, that particular program, um, that was a, uh, like I said, a clean water SRF program. Uh, you, you met all the requirements, there were no environmental, uh, requirements that would call, have that project go up dramatically. And so we closed that loan, that was ten point two million of the twenty-one, and so that left just a little under eleven million for your share. So during this last couple of months, we've looked at, well, if worst-case scenario, it's a thirty-three million dollar hit, your share, you have, you have a little under eleven million available to do your one-third, and so that's been our guiding light for the last couple of months.
We, we have the revenue to cover an ele, up to eleven million dollars.
Cover that.
We don't have eleven million dollars sitting around, we have the revenue to cover an eleven.
The revenue over twenty-nine years that'll take to pay back the financing.
So, so you guys wouldn't have to increase rates?
No more rate increases, okay.
Well.
Hopefully.
It should be an aim.
Well, as far as for the stipulation of paying back this loan, as far as for the stipulation for paying back this loan, not indefinitely ever again.
We're on the record, we got it straight, yes, that's correct.
Any other questions?
I'll just say, instead of talking again, there's kind of a companion item on the city side, and that's because the city is one of the beneficiaries of the Bethany Waracar's PWA. Uh, so just like the five million dollar loan we approved back in December, that's the companion item we need the approval of the city side as well for the trust to improve the debt.
Make sure I can explain this succinctly. This item is to approve the agreement between the two trusts, that just memorializes how things have been built in the past. The item on the city agenda is the item to essentially allow the joint trust to go out for the loan.
Yep, that's exactly right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Alright. Yeah, and we need, uh, yeah, looking for a motion on, uh, discussion of possible action of adopting the number that will be there.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second it.
Second it, thank you. Myers, or, uh, yeah, Judy, yeah.
Who was the first?
Bunthere.
Bunthere?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Steel?
Yay.
Myers?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Tribby?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yay.
Message approved.
Um, and I don't think we need, you guys need to head over to Bethany?
Well, they wanna see if we're gonna approve the other one, probably.
Oh, no. Alright, item number five, uh, SRB reporting wastewater master plan and program.
Good luck, guys.
That was easy.
They know why I said that.
Nothing is easy.
They know what they're getting ready to go to. And I just changed the.
Free shoes got all messed up. Hello?
Changed the bikes.
We need to keep talking about the wastewater system.
There you go.
Yay.
So I have a, for not, we're, we're clean enough for all of the people here, but I have my.
Thank you.
Fine, you can give, okay.
You can just see me a lot tomorrow.
Alright, so this is a very brief update on wastewater master plan. Alright, so, as most of you are aware, and as you're becoming aware, SRB is doing a wastewater master plan update and a twenty-twenty-four sanitary sewer evaluation study. And these are actually tied to the discussions that you guys have just been having about the treatment plant and ODEQ, so this is part of helping meet all those requirements. So for the sanitary sewer evaluation study update, just a refresher, this is basically comprised of inspecting pretty much all of the manholes around Waracar's, doing some CCTV cleaning of approximately half of the system, so sending a camera down in and looking around. And then some smoke testing of nearly the entire system. So, everything is progressing well, the manhole inspections, we've done six hundred and eighty-eight as of yesterday, so it's probably a little over seven hundred now. And the public works staff, they have been a huge help. One of those pictures, the guy knocking on the door, is one of your very own, that's Ronnie. And then, the other picture of the two guys, those are two guys from Woolport, our sub, who are doing the dirty work, literally. And CCTV, that got started a couple weeks ago with Hydromax. Um, you may have seen their gigantic truck driving around. The public works staff has also been helping with that, and just contacting landowners with any questions, and I think helping out with some of the traffic control. So that is progressing, that is just getting started, that's why not much has been accomplished yet. And then the smoke testing, we are waiting for warmer weather, I asked Woolport when that plans to start, and, um, we're thinking late March, early April for that to get going. So that is progressing right along. Are there any questions on the SSES?
On the smoke testing, I'm sorry.
No, please, go ahead.
Yeah, go for it.
On the smoke testing, are you testing the entire system?
I don't know if we'll get to the entire system, but we plan to do about ninety-five percent of it.
And I assume we're trying to find the rainwater infiltrations areas?
Yes, yep, and possibly illegal taps.
Oh, I do remember that discussion. I was wondering, how long do you think the smoke testing will take, once you get started?
I think that'll be completed within a couple of months. But, I'll be back next month, and so I'll have more information then, yay.
To perform the smoke testing, does it have to be typically over eighty degrees, or can we be in the mid-seventies like what we currently have, or? I mean, to perform it successfully and get the results you desire.
Right, I think we could do it in seventies, yeah, but it, we want it to be warm consistently. I was right, this week would be a good one to go out and do it.
It's a good week for it, yeah, in Oklahoma's bipolar, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we, we want the weather to be consistent, a little more consistent, that is. So, we'll probably be, I'm guessing closer to April fifteenth, which is the date of last frost for Oklahoma.
Okay, good to know.
Any other questions? Good.
Alright, so for the wastewater master plan, the big part, so, there's the sanitary sewer evaluation study, which is going out and getting in the system and looking at it. Then the wastewater master plan is mainly a hydraulic analysis of the system. So we have gone out, done flow measurements, surveyed several manholes with our crew, and then we have a modeler who has put this all into the computer and has run a bunch of different scenarios to get the computer model to match up with what we've seen out in the field. And that is, come together very nicely, both for dry weather and wet weather, so seeing how it rains. And then we added information from the joint interceptor with Bethany, that big old line that goes up to that treatment plant that has been having problems. And then, next up is adjusting for storm. So it's pretty much done. So the wet weather simulations, just for some overview. So the main picture is the system, there are teeny little green dots for all of the manholes. And then the yellow is where the model shows a moderate risk of overflow. Whether or not there actually is overflow is a different issue. And then purple is where the model shows a high risk of overflow. So, mostly around Sixty-third Street, and then up on Northwest Expressway, and so there are some areas concerned, Sixty-third Street, Fifty-Eighth and Meridian, the Grove Lift Station, Northwest Expressway, Thirty-sixth and Ann Arbor. So we will, so next steps, fill, finishing the model analysis, so final calibration with spring rains. We're not gonna wait for the spring rains to develop our project list, but we will use that to confirm. Okay, 'cause I don't wanna wait much longer on this, we need to keep this moving. So, the model is not a hundred percent done, there's a little bit more work to be done. That said, we're gonna keep moving on evaluating this. That said, we're going to keep moving on evaluating this. Going to perform some lift station assessments with Mike's help and his guys. And then we're going to finish identifying and prioritizing the projects. And I will be back next month with another update. And I fully expect to have a list of projects. Not necessarily, they're not necessarily finalized, but what we've identified today.
Is this work part of our corrective actions required for DEQ for our wastewater plant?
Yes. Yep, it all ties in together.
So we don't have a lot of choice whether we're going to fix it or not. It's how we're going to fix it.
Pretty much. And this is kind of a silly question, but what happens when you find the illegal taps?
Yeah.
We let you guys know when you guys can't handle that.
We got this cool thing called a balloon.
Then I have another silly question. The green spray paint on the curb, does that mean you've been there? Um...
It shows where the manhole is in relation to the street curb.
I knew it had something to do with it. Thank you.
There are 668 new green lines throughout the city, right?
Possibly.
All right.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number six, discussion of possible action on appointing John Evans to serve on the Bethany War Acres Public Works Authority Trust as the War Acres third member for 2024. May I have a? Motion, yes.
I'll second, oh, sorry. I'll second it.
Buntheir?
Yes.
Myers?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Evans?
I'll abstain.
Douglas?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Steele?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay.
Motion approved.
All right. And item number six, we'll reconvene back to the city council meeting. Item number seven, consider, consideration discussion on possible action on the resolution number to be named. A resolution for the city of War Acres, Oklahoma. Approve the occurrence and indebtedness for the War Acres Bethany, Bethany War Acres Public Works Authority, authorizing issuing sales and delivery of promissory notes, the authorizing, or the authority to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board approving and authorizing the marriage to sign on behalf of the city in agreement with the authority and approving action taken by the Bethany Public Works Authority and approving such agreement. Do we have a motion?
I move we adopt this resolution.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Morris?
Yay.
Buntheir?
Yay.
Myers?
Yay.
Steele?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay.
Motion approved.
All right, item number eight, we will recess for cake and reconvene in about 25 minutes.
Takes that long, Dave, cake?
Or less.